For future consideration and I believe anything that is on the current agenda. So would anyone like to address the board? We ask that you state your name and address for the record and we limit your comments to five minutes. So would anyone like to address the board this evening? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Steve Hill. My address is 12101 West Holmes Avenue, Greenfield. I just wanted to take a moment to compliment the board on the process that, for the referendum. I really feel it's been a fair and concise process that has been open to the public and very transparent. And I, as a constituent of this district, I really do appreciate that. We've had in several instances where I feel that things have been brought to the board, have been not, I won't say under the table, but things have been, deals have been done, projects have been built under another name and that if you looked at the project and what the name of the project was, it really didn't match, the two didn't match. I really think that this, these projects that are on the table, that are in front of the voters are laid out in a nice concise manner and has, have been brought and it's getting the, getting the voter approval is a huge step forward for this board. Like I said, it takes away from some of the feelings of the community as backroom deals. So I just want to applaud the board for the transparency that you've had. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Would anyone else like to address the board? Would anyone else care to address the board? Seeing none, then we'll move to our recognitions. And first up, we have Vince, oh boy.
Jackie can say his last name.
Jackie can say. I should know.
My name is Vince.
How do you say it?
Yassantine.
Yassantine. And thank you, we're very proud of you.
So Vince is a senior, you've probably seen him here at board meetings before. He also works for the technology department in the summer as well as he's doing one of our internships during the school year. So he's in the library and he's helped students out with their iPads as well as does projects for Miss Kaiser. I'm going to let him explain to you his Eagle Scout project and where he's at with it.
Thank you. I'm doing my Eagle Scout project in the Hales Corners Park in the poolhouse. Previously, there was no locker rooms, there was just changing areas. So what we did was repainted the space, brought in about 50 lockers in each side and enclosed the ductwork and then replaced all the exterior benches that were falling apart to give them a new lifespan and try and bring more usage to the pool because there's been, every year the pool usage seems to increase a little bit. So it's just another way to help get more usability and security with items. So now people can just bring a padlock and lock up any personal belongings that they may have.
A question, how did you become interested in this project?
Well, I originally was looking at a project at Where Nature Center which didn't pull through. So I was looking around and this was suggested to me. And when I met with Don Schwartz, I realized that this was probably the best project I could do. And it just keeps falling into line and it's going very well.
Can you turn it so we can kind of take a peek too? And describe a little bit about what's on those pictures for us?
I'll leave it over there if you want to look after. But on this board, it kind of shows what was originally there and just kind of what I took out of there. And then some Whitnall students and Whitnall graduates who volunteered to help me move lockers. And then over on this side, it shows building the ductwork enclosure and just kind of the most recent pictures of what the lockers installed and the new paint colors and everything.
How did you come up with the resources to get this done?
Well, we actually, the lockers just appeared on Craigslist and we couldn't pass up on the opportunity. So we went and picked those up. And then I ordered lumber and I went to pick it up and found out it had been donated to me, which was huge. The paint was donated. And lately, I've had some community members and Whitnall families who have sent in some donations, which is wonderful. I'm still looking for more donations. The whole project is about $2,000, just with supplies, the lockers cost and just every little thing, so.
This is fantastic. What's, what have you learned doing this?
I've learned how to communicate with people more, the county and just everyone who I've had to work on and some leadership skills in coordinating the volunteers to help me with this.
Great skills, lifelong. Okay.
I just want to, everybody, I know Stephanie knows, but in that long litany of the things that Vince has taken on, you know, the internship, the working with the technology crew, he was also the stage manager for the play. Is your family in the audience?
Yeah.
The work ethic is amazing. The time he puts in is incredible. How he has time to sleep at night and get to school and time in the morning is pretty impressive.
Thank you.
And your Eagle Scout ceremony is scheduled for?
I have not scheduled it yet, just because I haven't finished the project.
When are you hoping to get the project done?
The project, I'm looking to do in a couple of weeks, just one more day, just to finish cleaning up the benches, a little more paint touch-up. And then I have a brat stand over at the Pick 'n Save on 76 in Cold Spring to raise funds, April 18th and 19th. So that'll be some fundraising. And after that, I'm looking to do my ceremony, probably in May.
Okay.
Did you enjoy painting?
I enjoyed doing other stuff while my lovely volunteers painted.
That's a good way to make a living this summer that would really enhance going to college. So your dad has my phone number.
He's learning how to delegate, Quinn.
I got one of those guys.
If someone wanted to donate, where would they, how do they get ahold of you or how do they donate?
I put my email at the bottom of the poster.
Okay.
And there's also, it's also on the Whitnall Facebook page.
Okay.
It was posted a few days ago.
And we'll maybe get that in our minutes as well, so that if someone wants to donate, they know how to get. Are there some people in the audience you'd like to introduce who might, you know, be related? Or part of your network, friends?
I've got Mr. Seaver who's volunteered for my project a couple of days. He's got some paint on his.
I like to wear my paint. At least it's the right color.
I'm going to stick with Vince.
My dad, Mrs. Baker also volunteered on my project. My mom and my exchange student, Leslie.
Thank you.
She's from France. And she came all the way just to volunteer for me.
Wow. Outstanding students. Thank you all. And thank you to the family and for everyone who supported him in this project. All right. That's a great way to start. Thanks for coming, we really appreciate it. Next up, we have, I want to take a minute to recognize, although it's not directly on here, Mike Seaver who did climb some stairs. What was that project about?
It was the American Lung Association's Fight for Air Stair Climb. It was our school's sixth year of participating in the event. I mean, mainly it's myself as the team captain and I get a few student council members and we invite other kids from the school who want to do it with us. And so this year, we raised close to $800. And this was our best year yet. Our team finished second place in the family and friends group category. We had two eighth graders on our team who finished in 10th place and 18th place out of a total of 3,100 climbers. So they finished it in just over seven minutes.
Well, our thanks go out to you and to the students who did that. It's out in the paper and I remembered hearing you were going to go.
And there's a link on the Whitnall Facebook page that was posted this afternoon. One of our eighth graders and one of our sixth graders made it on CBS 58 News Saturday night. They were interviewed, so you can watch the clip online.
Great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our consent agenda and I will read through this list and then we will pull out any items that the board might want to pull out and then we will approve this consent agenda with a vote without discussion. But first up, we have A, approval of Whitnall Middle School Staircase Reconstruction Contract; B, approval of early graduation requests; C, approval of youth options requests; D, approval of Revised Policy 321 School Calendar; E, approval of math curriculum adoption; F, approval of March vouchers and vouchers payable; G, approval of February 28th, 2015 and March 9th, 2015 school board meeting minutes; and H, approval of Edgerton Elementary Parking Lot Contract. Are there any of those that the board would like to pull out?
We pull E, please.
We're pulling out E, all right, the math curriculum. Any other ones? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I think you have to name the.
Oh, A, B, C, D, F, G, and H, forgive me. Approve the consent agenda which, including A, B, C, D, F, G, and H.
So moved.
Now, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 John Jones is on the phone here, I forgot.
And opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we will talk about the approval of the math curriculum adoption. All right. And questions?
Just, I know that Doug's not here, but I see Tony and Lowell, you're here. Could you run through those numbers again? Because when we talked about this in Finance Committee, we were looking for the offsetting costs, if there were any.
Yes, and I'm just looking for the email he sent.
By replacing the curriculum with something different?
Hold on a second here. Kathy, did you send it out or did Doug?
Did we want the?
Doug did.
Probably want this.
No, I don't want that, I want the spreadsheet, he had the two spreadsheets.
But this is.
Yep, I don't want that.
No, because this is the only thing he gave me.
You got, did you, Quinn, did it show up in your email? I don't know.
The last one was just sent this afternoon, or today sometime.
Oh, now that's the Board of Education math.
It just came, it's from Doug.
Bridges math curriculum.
It's a memo.
Yeah. No, yeah, that wasn't, the two spreadsheets he had, that's what I was looking for.
He said they were attached, but they really weren't. He's not well today, Doug, we sent him home. Because he's really, he really got sick as the day went on.
Well, did you have the two of them?
Attached the memo instead of the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I think so.
I do know, and I, because I looked at him, he had them, and he was going to send them and he said he sent them, I saw it pop up and I thought, oh, they're there. But what he does show is that he does a comparison, and Tony, you actually were involved in that one, the comparison between the Bridges' cost over five years and the old curriculum cost over five years and then year six, we're past the, we get to the point where the new one actually costs five, six grand less per year than the old one does, once you get through that initial implementation with the training and all that stuff. Do you have those numbers?
I have the numbers, I didn't make copies or anything.
What, you want to make some copies for me?
Sure.
Yeah, and.
I'm happy to.
I wish.
Unless I would have made copies before.
Well, I have another question associated this, but not, so obviously, there's a cost increase here. Do we, have we targeted any, any target decreases to pay for this?
Yeah, it's actually, it's a break even after five years. It's not an increase.
Well, after five years, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and he had broken down, there's an additional 14, 15,000 cost per year over two years, was that on what?
Which one?
Yeah, I'm really caught in the, I apologize.
Yeah, when I get the sheet, it might help, just to kind of see it.
Yeah, I can go play in his office and see if I can find it too. But where it's coming from, Quinn? We talked, Doug and I did talk about that, it's spread out over the entire budget. So it's not just coming from one area. You know, you might take some from the travel budget, you might take some from conferences, you might, and I told Eric I'd say this, but Eric's sick also, we have, we're a very sick office right now. You might take some from the technology budget, because technology is considered to be a tool to help implement the curriculum. So you have to have the curriculum for the technology to kick in and help with the implementation part. This is the one, this is one of the two that he showed me, where it shows the cost over five years for the Bridges and the cost over five years for the everyday math. So then after six years, it's actually almost $6,000 less expensive to stick with the Bridges program. Because of the ongoing, I mean, the repetition cost.
But the upfront costs are going to be higher?
The upfront costs are going to be, yeah, because it's a new program, you have to train your teachers. If we don't, if we don't train them, it's going to be an ineffective program. And when we talked today with, had a couple of Chris's teachers talking in our Climate Committee, how important that, the training session was, that they have planned over the summer to learn how to implement that.
Questions? Those have come in. Well, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at the numbers. And consumables alone are 95,989. Now, I'm pulling that from the Borg memo, not from the spreadsheet. But that's consumables, that's part of that upfront cost, we can finance that at no interest, which is great, over two years, but the first year alone is 48,000. Consumables that are budgeted for the current math program between Edgerton and Hales Corners are running about 27,000. So we're doing a little bit under half as a wash, if I'm running my numbers right. So if we've got 48 in the first year off the 27, and I'm doing this really quick, we've got about 11,000 that we're looking to make up in consumables in the budget the first year alone. And that doesn't include teacher training time, that doesn't include.
How much did you say, Stephanie, I'm sorry?
I'm running about 11,000, if I've got my figures right. That is, that is new cost, that's not offset by anything else. And that's just in the consumable portion. That's still not accounting for staff training, that's still not accounting for the substitutes, that's not accounting for the rest of the cost. So we're trying to find over $11,000 next year.
That's it?
Well, over. I don't know what the rest of the costs are besides the consumables.
I don't know where the numbers are coming from.
So how much do you think the upfront cost will be in the first two years of the program?
If you look on here, implementation training is all the summer.
You can find.
And you would have had that anyways.
Yep.
You with everyday math?
Correct. Well, not with everyday math, I don't know what the question is between. Here, here's the thing, with everyday math, everyday math next year expires.
Right.
This is our last year. So if we stick with everyday math, this column on the right.
Kicks in.
Kicks in. We have to do that. And that's, this is this year's prices, prices always go up, so.
And so there would be, the training would be same cost whether we went with everyday math or Bridges?
Actually, there are everyday, everyday math is usually a little bit more expensive, but I kept it even.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just going by what's on here.
Correct.
So because there's, it's a new program.
It's a whole new addition, it's a whole new.
So we have to have the training for that.
Correct.
Unit lessons designed.
So once you buy the package, it doesn't mean that things are designed. It just gives you access to the curriculum, so then teachers are, so throughout the school year, they'll meet staff development, build lessons, they'll meet and analyze assessments, they meet with either, either Aaron as a K-12 coordinator or coaches to kind of build those lessons.
At the end of the week, we have to spend the 21,000 for that, either way.
Ah, correct, yeah. In order to support teacher implementation, right.
Sorry, hung up.
So, and the consumables is about 6,000 less.
Correct.
But the cost of the material license is about 23,000 more.
Correct. So the difference between the consumables and the upfront, and the materials license cost is equal after five years.
And we had this everyday math for 20 years.
Correct.
And the hard thing is to approve things prior to the budget being approved and, but that's your guy's job to put all the pieces together.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, our biggest, the biggest, the reason I'm here is that our current curriculum does not meet the state standards. We're not meeting students' needs. So whether it's $11,000 or $100,000, we, everyday math does not meet students' needs.
Would it, the new part, the new addition?
Yep.
It would.
The new addition of everyday math, uh, there's some argument around that. We don't know for sure.
And we know that the Bridges does?
Absolutely, yep. That was the study this year that the entire K-12 math team did.
The sheet I just handed out was the one that Doug meant to attach. Not the one he sent you before. And this explains it rather well and it shows what the increase is over year one and year two for a two-year, I mean, a two-year total of 30,000. So that's the, that's the impact where we'll, what we'll have to do is find, and it's a shift, you don't add, you find $15,000 within your 24 million dollar budget. And in the grand scheme of things, you know, the $15,000 isn't a huge financial impact.
And does Eric know about that last sentence?
Yes, I sort of do.
You know, and I'm still, I like these figures better because we're talking about the consumables and the classroom materials, which helps. But we're still talking about ongoing training and the last figures we saw for that, the ongoing training was 21,000. And the teacher training for, as I've been given to understand over the course of four days, not two, is 32,500. So when you add those costs into this first year cost, we're not talking 15,000, we're talking more.
We have the training budget, oh, I mean, we already.
It's already built in.
Training teachers during the summer for different things, depending on what they're working on. So we already have staff development days built in. I mean, that's a, that can be absorbed by that budget.
Okay, but then they're giving up training if they otherwise normally would have had another area though.
Right, so yeah, it's prioritizing.
So you're substituting one type of training for another.
No, we, no, not necessarily, it's just that's, it's whatever is needed for that year. So for example, last year, we had the entire high school here for the one-to-one training. The year before that, it was the entire middle school for their one-to-one training. The year before that, it was the literacy training for the entire K-5 staff. So we look at what's, it's, we've always had a staff of some sort at one level. And so this year, the, you know, that placeholder, I guess, is still there. It was in last year's budget, so this year it'd be for elementary to get trained in this.
Can you tell me about how much that budget usually is?
It's 32,500, or 21, 32,500.
The training budget for the district that you set aside every year, not the Bridges training?
Um, it would be $500 per teacher times the number of staff plus whatever it costs to bring in the trainers.
And we do have that kind of training budget built into our.
So last year, you know, last year probably would have been a little bit lower, or a little bit higher than this one, since we have more staff members at the high school.
And did that also count for the ongoing training as well? Is there a budget that we have?
The ongoing training is 21,000, that's the, that's the staff development.
Again, there's budget for that also?
Correct.
Because these are substitute costs, we're not talking about a summer institute that's being held in August, we're talking about ongoing during the school year that we're paying subsidies for these teachers.
Right, and we still have that, we use that substitute budget throughout the school year. So it's, we're not going to eat it all up with this, there'll still be money left, we'll still have the, the full day staff in-service costs that are associated with that. It's just what we're saying is the, the costs, those are easy to meet within our, our staff development budget. The 15,000 that Doug's identified, that'll be where we'll actually have to take a piece from here, a piece from there. And then when we get to budget time, we present that and say, here it is, and it'll match what our, our budget is set at.
Okay. Nancy?
Tony?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the best curriculum for our students?
From what I know. Now, I mean, again, I leave it to the teachers who know what they're doing. And Aaron led the entire teacher team and there was a consensus that was overwhelmingly given, and you heard the testimony of the two teachers. We're piloting them at each of the buildings this, within the next couple of weeks. Fourth grade?
Fourth, third, second.
Yeah, so right now, the intervention component of this is actually being used to intervene with our students. I mean, it's just the best method, so.
I mean, we've heard positive things from the teachers that have talked to us.
Yep.
I mean, Lowell, you know you can't go over the budget, right?
Absolutely.
So then find, find a way to work it.
And, and Tony, you hit the nail on the head. One of the things we do as administrators is we find experts in our field and we have teachers that are experts in that field and Aaron certainly is one of them. He blew me out of the water in a math contest, believe me.
You have a limited amount of money.
Of course, you guys have worked with me for five years, so you believe me already.
You have a limited amount of money, spend it how, you know, what's best for the students, so I'm fine with it.
John, did you have questions?
Nope, as long as we can, we can afford it, it seems to be.
Okay.
We're about to have to spend a bunch of money on our program that I've heard nothing but complaints about from parents of elementary school kids. Then, then our curriculum coordinator is all for this and that kind of stuff, and I'd say we, I'm good.
We're good. We're good. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the math curriculum adoption as proposed. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? I'll just mention, thank you to all of you for all the hard work that you did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's another aye. Seeing none, motion carries.
A little slow.
Yeah.
I get a little nervous.
Rotation, rotation of the earth there slows it down a little bit. So, all right, thank you very much, thank you for coming again here. Okay, next up, we have old business, our referendum update.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us posted on all of the events coming up, that's been very helpful.
No problem.
We recognize you for that.
So in the two weeks since our last meeting, we've done a lot of, we've had a lot of events. We've had our two referendum information nights. We had, how many, where is that? We had eight people show up at the Hales Corners one and we had 11 people show up at the Whitnall High School one on the 12th. We had our tours last week, which were, I think, successful. We had 11 people come through Hales Corners Elementary and seven people come through Whitnall High School. Those were last Wednesday and Friday. The last mailing has been, is at the printer and it's ready to be mailed on next Monday, a week from today. It's right before the, we wanted it to go out the week before the election or referendum, so that will be going out next, next Monday.
We're in that.
That's a postcard style mailing that just has a little bit more information and also talks about some early voting, if people want to vote between, you know, up until April 3rd. So early voting, glad you brought that up.
Today.
Started today. In-person, early absentee voting started today and runs through Friday, April 3rd at 5:00 PM at your respective city or village hall. So you, if you're not registered, you have to take a form of ID and I have that on the website, the types of ID that work. You take that in and then you have to register to vote and then you can fill out an absentee application to vote and then you can cast your ballot. If you're already registered, you can skip that first step and you just have to fill out the absentee application and then cast your ballot. And that, like I said, we have all that information on the website as far as where you can, where you can go between now and April 3rd. I'm getting a lot of questions from people where they should vote on April 7th, which is really tricky for me to answer because it depends on where you live. So we've, I've been trying to provide the, at least some general guidelines as to where those people should go. If you live in Hales Corners, you do vote at Village Hall, doesn't matter where in Hales Corners you live, that's where you vote. Greenfield, there's two locations that serve our district, one is the Community Center and one is the high school. One is the community center, and one is the high school. And then Franklin, most people who live in Franklin that live in our district vote at Saint Martins of Tours Church. But I am still suggesting that anyone who asks me that question, that they call their city or village clerk to make sure, because it's all dependent on where you live, so, and what ward you live in. Let's see, the website, I know, Quinn, you asked this last week or two weeks ago, the website's up to about fifteen hundred people have clicked on the, the icon that takes you to the main information page. The videos had gone out since last time we met. The videos, the YouTube videos are posted. We've used them on the website. We used them on social media. I just got confirmation from Roger Brinkmeyer, the local access channel provider, or he manages that site. They run at eight A.M., four P.M., and nine P.M., back-to-back and then back-to-back, so consecutively. So they run, he runs them as a bunch of two. And then the village board presentation that Dr. Holtz and Luanne did at Village Hall on March second is also on, on the local access channel. That runs at nine A.M., three P.M., and eight P.M.
What is the local access channel for?
Uh, it's Time, you have to be a Time Warner cable subscriber. And it, I think it's like Channel Seven or Fourteen, I can't remember. One of those two numbers. Yeah, so I don't know who, how many people do subscribe to Time Warner in the village, but it's available to them.
I do, but I don't get the tone.
Is just for Village, just for Hales Corners Village?
I don't know how far the signal reaches, but that might be why. It might just be a Hales Corners, so.
It's like two blocks.
I'm not fair as that.
We also visited both, we visited the HCE and Edgerton PTOs in the last two weeks. We've held seven open-door sessions, I think, in the last two weeks. We've been to several other events, spreading information. We've been using social, social media and Infineon Campus, and I think that's it. Fifteen days.
I was asked a question that, Hales Corners, we had a tour, an open-door person came, and I know I asked somebody, but I want to make sure I get it right. We can only borrow up to the...
Twenty-two, twenty-two point five million dollars for the rebuilding of Hales Corners Elementary.
Right. And what happens if it goes over?
It can't go over. We can't, we have to budget it to the point where it does not go over twenty-two point five million dollars.
We can't...
Or we can't borrow any more money. I don't, we cannot borrow money. I don't.
You can always add other parts of your budget.
Right.
But you can't, sort of like Dave said, what you, you cannot borrow more, so it can't have another impact on the taxpayers.
Okay. Lori's not here? Okay.
So any other...
Lori's home sick as well.
If not, I want to...
It's hit everybody.
I want to thank you, I want to thank all of our administrators, everybody that's working hard, and thanks to the public who took the time to come to these sessions. We really appreciate your interest in this referendum.
Yeah, all right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we just had a brief, just wanted to do a brief discussion of the post-referendum planning session. It's our intent, all I wanted to do here is say that the following Monday is our next regular scheduled board meeting, and we will adjourn from the regular board meeting, then go into a workshop session to discuss our post-referendum steps, okay? Just really wanted to make you all aware of that, that that's the next step after the referendum.
Okay, so that is whether it passes or whether it does not pass?
Right. Either way, we go right into a workshop session to define our next steps. Correct.
And that's the thirteenth...
Because, you know, you were wondering, the vote is on Tuesday night. Should we have it on Wednesday night? We thought about a special session, you know, that week, but we decided, no, it would be better we all know we can meet on that Monday night. That's our regular scheduled board meeting, and we really need the full board there for that discussion. So that's why we put that on the agenda, to make sure you all know what the next steps would be.
Well, you, you may have a new board member as well.
Correct. Not starting then, though.
They're not sworn in that meeting.
But they would be, they should be invited.
Invited.
They should be invited.
Right. Well, it's still gonna be open, because the workshop is still gonna be an open session.
We would invite the entire public to that. That will be an open session, so. And we hope people will come. It's a collaborative effort. The future of Whitnall Schools is a collaborative effort. So that's what, we hope to keep that going.